Jess, um, how are you?
Doing all right, surviving the summer.
Yeah, how's the summer been?
Uh, it's been a childcare puzzle, so I'm, I'm ready for my son to get back to school. He, he'll start preschool and he has already been writing his name, both the three-letter nickname and his five-letter full name. So I am, I know he's gonna love school, so I'm ready for him to get there.
That's awesome. I love that. Um, we're here today with Jess Moore. Jess was a part of School Board School. Jess, what class were you again?
Class two.
Class two, um, and since then have been really engaged in the work, um, with School Board School folks, but also just in your community. And I think, um, I can't wait to hear more about your story. My name is Jeremy Jones. I'm the Chief Executive Officer of School Board School, and we are launching this conversation series with our members to share more about, uh, what they're up to in the community and also, um, just, uh, hype them up and, and celebrate their work. And so we're, we're really excited to be, be with Jess today. And Jess, I'm, I'm curious, sort of like if we kind of step back and think about your, um, the origin story of, of Jess Moore, um, give us a little bit of a background of, of who you are.
Oh, man, I love that concept of the origin story. Um, I was actually just telling someone today that, uh, I grew up in Dayton and I grew up, uh, moving every year. My mom, we stayed with my grandparents for a while, so we all shared a bunk bed, my mom, my sister and I in a bedroom. While my mom went to college and I, as a ten-year-old, helped her with her algebra. My dad also went to college as like an older adult. Uh, he was a carpenter who built houses and, um, hurt his back for sort of the last time and went and became a computer guy, um, is what I describe. And then worked for the federal courts, um, for twenty years, which is wild because, um, my dad was kind of a hippie rebel. Before that, um, but that sort of landed me in Columbus where I was really passionate about, um, access to food because I had realized, um, sort of moving away to Dayton, moving to college, moving in with people like, nobody really knows anything about what they're eating. Um, and in my family, we have a lot of diabetes, um, and just general sort of health problems that I have always been really conscious about. So, um, got really passionate about food and, um, how diet really relates to health. After college, I graduated into the recession with a communications degree from a liberal arts college. So I kind of floated around as a bartender, like lost in the atmosphere for, uh, quite a long time, actually, until I moved to Cincinnati and, um, really just decided that my resume wasn't working and that somebody had to learn my heart. So I, um, really, I started volunteering any, any place I wanted to work. Because my, my, all of my experience in work had been in food service, which was out of necessity and not at all out of, uh, passion. And so I started volunteering at the, um, Peaslee Center in OTR, teaching cooking lessons in a garden to kids. And I was like, this is, this is everything that I want. I want to be teaching kids about vegetables because my mom always found a place to put a little garden, even like if it was along the apartment fence in the parking lot up against the public pool, like my mom planted some tomatoes and peppers there. And like, I remember all of that. So that was a really great thing I got to do. Um, I was working as a chef downtown, so it sort of worked really well that I could, um, be mixing, um, both of those things together. And then, um, when I found School Board School, it, it really made me feel like a valid person in some of these professional spaces that I had, um, had never been able to be in. And that allowed me to then find my skill, um, in connecting to people. So I had been doing a little bit of volunteering with Cohere, um, because I felt like that was a great way for, you know, like you said, like my voice to be shared, um, in a way that had, nobody had asked me before. And, um, so they were sort of on this list of places I was spending time, you know, with. Uh, and so then after I did School Board School, it kind of, you know, was presented to me. Dunny asked me like if I would be an organizer for a few hours a week. And I said, uh, I already work fifty hours as a nanny at this point. I can't work a few more hours a we- a week, but you know, I would like to work for you. And so he worked that out for me. And, um, it has worked out. It's now been, you know, since the shutdown, since the, you know, the month of the shutdown, I was offered the job. Um, and then took my very first office job online ever in my life, um, at a small startup of, um, mostly women. So it has been, uh, and all the while, all this story going on, I have ADHD and I had a ten-year addiction situation go on in relation to dealing with my ADHD. So to have come out of never having a stable place to stay, seeing my parents struggle and go to school, having my debt attached to my back with no, you know, nobody valuing the fact that I, I did the thing I, I was supposed to do to get out of the situation I was in. And instead I was in it. And so now, full circle in Cincinnati, I have just really found my way with my people who, as a teacher's kid, who married a teacher's kid, um, is with education advocates and, um, fighting for kids, um, and women in the, in Cincinnati.
It's such a powerful story. And as you were talking through it, I, I'm struck by this notion that, um, there have been things in your life that have all coalesced into the thing that you're doing now. Like, do you make sense of that? Do you reflect on that and like try to make sense of like, oh yeah, this is like my upbringing led me to this thing and then this professional experience led me to this thing? Like, do you feel like it's a cohesive thing or does it feel all messy and disjointed?
I mean, it, as cohesive as a ADHD person who's in recovery can get because the way that Cohere operates as a company is so beautiful that I have all of my needs met as a neurodiverse person. I work from home some, from the office some, I work with people some, I work on email some, and now I have ChatGPT, so that's great. Um, I work, you know, in the community. I work some nights. Sometimes I have to go pick up water bottles. Sometimes I'm having deep, deep conversations. I'm texting people. I'm maintaining relationships. And I'm getting up and I'm walking around and I'm doing it, you know, all on, um, in a way that is helpful to me. So that's like number one, because if I ever would have gotten a job in an office pre-COVID and I had to sit at a desk with fluorescent lighting and like, I, I, that wouldn't have worked for me. That would not have been the thing that made me thrive. So on top of all of that now, I'm getting to work on projects that are like so personal to me. And I don't know, and I don't know everyone else's stories, but I feel like everything, I care so deeply about everything because everything has happened to me. We worked on addiction. We worked on lowering the overdose rate in Price Hill specifically in the Black, Black and Brown community for, um, a while with Hamilton County Health Department. So I got to talk to other people who are in recovery and I got to say to them, hey, I'm in recovery. Like, please come to this meeting with me, like, share your experience. I can't speak for you because I have a white person experience in AA, so you need to come to this. I, I, I can connect with people, you know, truly and build a bond and speak the language and, and, you know, know what they say when they're talking about ninety and ninety and when they're talking about my chips. You know what I mean? Like, that's part of me. So I'm able to work with that population, even if it's a black man who's fifty. I still can find common ground and get him to come to a conversation. We did a conversation on, um, uh, housing insecurity. Obviously, that was something that was important to me. We did food access. Um, and this was a couple of years ago. We helped put people who have experienced poverty on boards because these philanthropy boards, and I won't speak for all of them, but some of them have no poor people on them or no people who've ever been poor. And so for them to be making decisions about how poor people should be experiencing things or how they should be doing their money or whatever, that's not really serving those folks. So Cohere helped put some, some of these people who have had these real lived experiences in places of power so that they can help change the culture. Because to me, I think that's, you know, I care about, um, right, uh, abortion access. Because to me now, I've had several miscarriages. I've had ectopic pregnancies. We've had fertility issues. All the while navigating abortion bans and trying to make a family. So to have conversations around, um, how the abortion ban was affecting women. I'm the one, I'm the one who's gonna call you up and say, hey, do you know anyone who's had an abortion recently? And they're gonna tell me because they trust me, we're friends, they're part of the network. Not everyone can just call up and get ten women to show up and share a story like that. So I think, uh, you know, everyone says everything is for a reason and I think that's kind of corny, but I do believe there is value in the experiences I've had. Um, what, a lot of them have been traumatic, um, but as I saw in my son last night, I feel like we are emotionally regulating in this family. We are seeing the value in the things that have, we have experienced and we are trying to change that for the better for other folks.
Yeah.
After, after Trump was elected the first time, I remember thinking like, okay, for four years, I can't do anything about up here. This is, this is done, but what I can do is I can help my neighbors. I can be a neighbor on my street. I can be a neighbor in Norwood. I can be, I'm a landlord now. I can be a kind and good landlord who does not raise the rent just for fun. You know, who fixes things like I can be a good mom. He can, my son can be a good man in the community. My, my husband and I are pillars in the community, all that stuff. We can do that right here in Norwood. We can do that in Cincinnati and that is all I can control. So yes, I do feel like it is all been sort of like the culmination of sort of right place, right time for me to, to be the right person, um, to do this kind of work.
You, um, I want to circle back to Cohere in a, in a minute, but, um, before we get there, um, you have this disposition of a person who sort of accepts responsibility for problems. You, you're like, well, maybe, uh, I think there's an old quote that's like, my, my job isn't to fix the whole world. It's to reach out to the broken piece in front of me and try to mend that. And I think, I feel like you really embody that spirit, right? Um, we walk down the street, there's trash on the street, like Jess is gonna pick it up. We walk down the street and there's a stray cat. Jess is going to take care of it. Or we walk into City Hall and we see a, um, a pantheon of, you know, older white dudes who've had sort of a singular type of experience in the world and Jess is going to address that, right? Um, and so like, talk to us a little bit more about where this comes from for you personally around just like the sense of responsibility to be a good citizen and, and like, what does that mean to you?
That's a really good question. Um, like a couple of things come to mind right away. Girl Scouts, uh, you le- leave a place cleaner than you found it, better than you found it, nicer than you find it, that kind of thing. Like, I have that in my brain as a kid. Um, I was really lucky that my pastor at my church was an incredibly compassionate person who only spoke of God's love, clothing yourself in love, who is your neighbor? Everyone is your neighbor. Jesus might be knocking at your door someday. So like, all, th- those kinds of things just inst- like, I, I instilled in me that we are a humanity. There were folks in my church who were gay and no one had to explain anything to me about them except that they were members of the church, they played the piano, they, they were a family or they weren't, they weren't dating, they were just in our church. Nobody had to say anything like that to me because we were all just people gathering. And so I think that I just went out into life thinking, okay, whatever you got, like, that's fine with me. And a lot of this, I think now as an adult, comes from the serenity prayer, which comes from sobriety is that like, there's just some stuff I can't control and that's most.
Yeah, right, right.
So if there is something that I have control to change for the better, like I usually do. And I'm, I do that everywhere. I sort of micro-maximize my physical surroundings as a way to keep myself calm. And so it just translates to out in the world of like, what can I do? Because I do have a loud voice and I'm not, uh, easily embarrassed. And I will share pretty much anything about myself with someone because it might help them because they maybe had that same experience too. So.
Mm-hmm. The power of the, you know, the, the secret meetings in the recovery rooms is, is that it teaches you about surrender, right? Um, you, you really have to understand, uh, the difference between like giving a hundred percent to a process, but letting the outcomes sort of go in the way that the outcomes are gonna go, right? Like not trying to control those things too hard.
Yeah, and then it's gonna change again anyway.
Right, right, right. Well, let's talk about Cohere. I mean, uh, tell me a little bit about the organization and, and, uh, what you do.
Yeah, so we are, I don't know if I can keep calling us a startup. We've existed now for, I think, eight years or so. Um, it's a community organizing and strategy company. Uh, it's run by just a handful of us. Monique Gilliam, I work with on the organizing team. Nia Baucki, who's our CEO, who's incredible. We have Eli Miners, who just joined us, um, recently and he's fit right in. And then we have one Columbus organizer. Uh, so just a few of us and, and basically, we are the community organizing experts in Cincinnati who maintain a network of what we call everyday experts and bridge builders. It's everyday folks living their lives in Cincinnati, whether they're parents of charter school kids or they're CPS parents or they're folks who, um, are, uh, facing addiction problems or people who ride the bus or just all these sort of everyday things. They don't have to be the boss of anything or working at a nonprofit or anything like that. Just are, you know, folks. So companies then hire us to do their community engagement and we start with our network first. And that way we get a grassroots group of people who aren't usually engaged. Because like, with Children's Hospital, they have a advisory board, but it's the same handful of families who are, who show up, um, who are really passionate, who have a certain point of view that they want to share, um, and resources to attend these kinds of meetings. And so then what Cohere does is like, if, you know, Children's wants us to, to get feedback from people who live in Avondale, they don't really have the trust and connections with the folks who live directly in Avondale like Cohere does. So we gather the people. I search them all out, one text at a time, five hundred texts a day sometimes. Who do you know? Do you know them? You got a sister? Do you got a cousin? Hey, you said you used to stay in Avondale, you know, um, all these kinds of fishing questions to then get ten folks to a conversation, um, and speak directly with the leadership of the client. So like, president of the bus system, the CFO of Metro, not someone who's gonna write a little report and send it along. Like these conversations we've been having with JFS, Margie, who's in charge of, you know, child services. She's sitting in the room, listening to these children and young people who have been in foster care recently. Tell her they're messing up. JFS is messing up, you know, so she's receiving that. She's not gonna forget. I've been in these conversations. She is not going home to forget.
Right.
What Amber said to her face about her experience. She is not going to forget these women, these people, these boys, these men. All, they're not forgetting their names and stories. And so that is what is driving the massive change that Cohere's after. We're trying to change the way people make decisions by always including the everyday expert, always including. They're not like, you know, consumer maybe is the word or user or, um, the community of anything. So we, we hope then that after these conversations, after Cohere does write up a final report, summarizes everything, that then the companies that we work with will make huge sweeping changes like how, um, Metro did after they got that levy. But the changes they made came from conversations they had through Cohere about needing twenty-four hour routes, needing better crosstown routes, needing family pass, needing, you know, cleaner, nicer, neater buses, all these things. Um, and they did it because they sat there and they listened to Brittany tell her story about how she has to choose a job based on where the bus line goes. Because the president of the bus, that's not how he's thinking. That's not his daily life. If he's not having to use his brain in the same way, someone who has to coordinate transportation fully relying on the bus system here in Cincinnati does. So I feel like what we do is, you know, unprecedented. I feel like we're the leaders in it. I feel like no one's really doing anything like it. I'm happy always to add to the network. Everyone is welcome because everybody's an everyday expert at multiple things. But at least one thing we're gonna work on. You're gonna know somebody. You're gonna have a friend, a brother, somebody who's gonna fit and who's gonna come to the table and feel so empowered that they're being heard on this subject that seems small but impacts them every day.
Yeah, that's, that's incredibly powerful. And it's, it's like, it's not a focus group, right? It's not a sterile focus group. It is like, you wanna see if your work is mattering to the people who are actually using the thing in a, i- i- as like a, you know, sustainable life source? Like, we're gonna put you in front of those people. That's, that's really incredible. I mean, I'm curious how, um, you, when you reflect back on your School Board School experience and the learning program specifically, like, how did that help sort of accelerate you toward this thing? Or how's that informed what your work is now?
Yeah, I mean, uh, right out of the gate, out of School Board School, we were working with CPS, like, right away. I would have had no idea. I mean, I, I come from a place where I graduated with six hundred and thirty people or so. We came from sort of five towns. You went to one school. That was the school or you went to the JBS, you know, the, the vocational school. Um, and, uh, besides maybe getting bussed around for the gifted program a little bit, uh, this was so foreign to me, the whole system. So right out of the gate, I was looking for parents who had, for one focus group, like kids at magnet schools. One group of parents who had kids at neighborhood schools, one group of parents who sort of pulled their kids out at one point. We, or people who just enrolled, people who had preschoolers, all these little subgroups. If I did not have the language of Cincinnati Public Schools and the equity understanding, the impacts that these things are having so that, you know, my conversations with people who in, in Hyde Park are different than people who are really advocating for their neighborhood school to be better. Um, Hyde Park got what they wanted. And so other people see that and they want that too. Um, but they don't feel like they're answered in the same way. And so I had to be sensitive to people's experiences. I had to believe them. You know, I had to come into it with, uh, with some knowledge so that I could converse with people and build trust and understand and not say, oh, well, that sounds crazy. Um, cause some of it does sound crazy, uh, the way that, you know, and then the funding, then the funding piece of it, you know? So then I'm able to talk to parents while I am building trust about, you know, that's like a state funding issue, you know? Or that's, that's because the state has mandated it and, and things like that. And so it's not my place, it was my place to be educating these parents at all. But, you know, it was, it was building trust. It was helping everyone in the conversation understand the schools better. Um, it also, it gave me a physical network of people who were just so incredible. They made, they upped my friend group. I mean, I, you know, shout out to Fry Cooks, but I really needed to hang out with some other kinds of people. And, um, you know, School Board School just showed me that I can be my nerdiest, you know, teenage self who wanted to be a senator when I grew up. Um, I can be that version of myself and these people, I'm gonna cry, value it and support it and I can help, be helpful to them and they can be helpful to me. And I, uh, I think in my relationships all around now, my husband and I have said like, we, we don't have any drama occurring because all of our relationships are supportive, whether they're people we talk to every day or people we talk to three times a year. Like, there's the same kind of, just tell me what's up, like judgment free and let's just hang and be together. And I think that comes from like the quality of people, um, that come through the system and my ability to connect people all over the city and learn the neighborhoods. Because I also don't come from a, a place like that. And I think Columbus is wanting to do neighborhoods now. Um, they're trying that out, uh, because it is pretty cool here. But it just, I never would have known Cincinnati in the intimate way that I do. Uh, I had just moved here. So it was, it was perfect.
And you were a part of, uh, one of the earlier classes in School Board School. I mean, it's been, you know, five, six years ago, um, it seems like this has like a long tail effect here. Like you're, you're sort of still benefiting from the network and from the learning program that you went through. Um, like, h- how does, how does it continue to sort of resonate for you since, since that long ago?
Well, I mean, Dunny being state rep is pretty awesome. Uh, so, you know, that keeps all of my networks kind of connected. Is this, this group of personal friends who are doing running for things and on School Board, um, you know, that's been like a really nice sort of casual, long-term effect to be involved in that, that little world. Because he comes and he speaks to School Board School. So we've, we've worked together Cohere and School Board School. That has been really nice. Um, I think I have a confidence. I'm now known for a few things in the community. And I think School Board School making me visible for that, giving me credit for that, always, you know, shouting me out, me showing up for things. I got asked to, uh, inaugurate the, uh, city council this year for Norwood, which had for the same year been done by the same, or for eight years had been done by the same guy who now was taking an office. So they needed someone else to do it. And because it was, uh, six women that we got to inaugurate and two guys, they were there too. Um, they asked me to do it and I, I showed up in a cute little outfit and, um, you know, put my little liberal agenda on a little bit. And, I mean, that's just the kind of thing that, because I do School Board School, you know, facilitate things for them, you know, uh, I reach out to everyone for Cohere all the time. Hey, who do you know? Do you know any foster parents? All those kinds of things. Like, I just am connected to everyone. Like, I just stay connected to them. It echoes out. I hope now I'm the person who every year gets to do the inauguration. Uh, until I, you know, get a seat like that, you know, I just, the opportunities keep showing up because I keep showing up to take the opportunities.
What a powerful message that is. And, and that's just like, we learned this, uh, very sort of crude, um, axiom in law school. Like, if you're not at the table, you're on the menu, right? And, and it's like, well, that's, that's why decisions get made, right? Because folks aren't showing up and, um, the system sort of relies on people not to show up, right? The burdens to, to actually be there are, are pretty significant for the folks who are being impacted by, by some of the decisions. Um, but you're, I think you're being really humble here, Jess, in that you not only got to inaugurate the, the city council folks, but you had a big hand in how that has sort of transformed. Do you want to talk a little bit about that?
I would love to. I love that. Um, yeah, so that, the whole, the, the Trump year, we had some city council people running. Um, we didn't have a lot of women running and we had one woman run. And I actually didn't even like her and vote for her. I voted for the man instead in her, in her space. But what happened was the whole, the whole council turned over to white men, uh, of a certain age. I don't know, I don't know how, how much, but of a certain age. We lost, uh, Leslie Stevenson, who I thought was an incredible asset to our town. We have fully lost her from Norwood, so miss you. Um, and I just, uh, after I saw them operating, it wasn't just that they didn't represent us as a community. We're not all men here. We're not all white here. We're not all, uh, in between that age here. Like, we have a lot going. I, even on my block in Norwood, I have, um, there's a young guy who speaks Spanish. We have a, we have neurodiversity among three or four kids here. We have, this family's got a nun. They're making a nun. They got a bunch of Catholic kids. We have homeowners. We have renters. You know what I mean? We have the, we have a house on the corner that needs taken care of, like every street, you know, we just, that's one block. And so for Norwood to look like that to the, to the outside eye was just, it was not accurate. Um, and then they were just, they were just wiling out, some of them. So my husband and I, using my skills that I learned at, uh, School Board School about building a coalition and I didn't want to run, I, I just got here. But I knew I had some things to donate. I had some things to help. My husband loves to make maps. He made all these little voter maps. So we're like, what do we do with this? So we called up all the awesome women that we knew and we said, like, hey, let's meet, let's, let's get together. And it was probably twenty women. We were sitting, it was cold. We were sitting outside masked up, COVID. We were like, okay, who wants to run next time? And everybody like sat on their hands, you know, like, no, not me, not me. And so then we said, okay, listen, who has a skill they would like to contribute to a, to a group campaign of Democratic women? Everybody's hand went up. Everybody had a skill. Y'all do graphic design. We got the, my husband had done these maps. We got, okay, I'll do this. I'll do door knocking. Because you don't need money to run a campaign in Norwood. Like, I think it's a, you know, somebody said they spent a thousand dollars or something. Probably flyers, whatever. What you need is people and what you need is people who will help you. So, you know, over the course, the next little while, we did video calls with Susan Hoover about marketing strategy. She, because my husband's in marketing and kind of this, um, numbers nerd. So we talked with her about stuff. Uh, my friend Emily Franzen, who got on, you know, we came to her to support her stuff. And, you know, it, it organically became these campaigns, became three campaigns that year. So, um, Emily, Candace and Susan, and then they all won. And then one seat, we chose an empty person over the guy who was running, the guy who was wiling out. So that seat then was appointable. So other woman who ran a campaign in her ward and lost, she got appointed because she had put in all the hard work already, which because she had put in all the hard work already, which we really appreciated. Um, so all of a sudden we had four women and um single women, married women, kids, you know, moms with young kids, older kids, no kids, you know, so diversity within them.
Yeah.
Um, and then this last election, they all rewon their seat because they did an incredible job. Um, and then also Sam Bowling, who is our first like queer person on council, also, you know, big deal. And so the momentum from I, from that meeting of women in Norwood getting shit done. I mean, I, I used to watch every council meeting and be enraged and my husband would do a little um podcast about it. He'd rewrite in nine minutes what happened at the council meeting because they were crazy.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
They were exhausting to watch. And so, you know, we would be able to, I don't have to do that now. I don't have to watch every single council meeting to know what kind of crazy thing they're trying to do or not do. Like I trust in all of their decisions. You know, I trust that Susan Hoover is taking care of Marsh Park in a way that really honors the history of what happened there. You know, I trust that Candace is making sure our kids are uh getting access to food and nutrition and plants in a way that is like important to her. Um, I text Emily all this stuff all the time for stuff because she's an entomologist. So she has a scientist's mind and like, you know, Lexis is the uh, our renter who's a lawyer. So she, her, I mean, they're just, I like Sam a lot too. They just all have such amazing perspectives. And the kind of experience I value because I don't think you have to be from here or not be from here to care about here.
Sure, yeah.
Um, and so I just, now I can relax about it all in a new way because I'm not carrying it all on my shoulders. So again, I'm not, I can't be on council and school board and be over here working on this and I have a kid and I have a husband and I'm a man. So it has been so nice that I feel like Norwood has got a momentum for, to represent who really lives here and who wants to stay here and um because it's all, it's really cool here. I mean, I know Norwood can do upgrades, but it's, it's so great here.
Well, I mean, congratulations on, on all of that. And, and you know, in part of what you were saying, you mentioned that it was just sort of organic, but um it, it wasn't, right? It was because like you took a step, you, you acted and then that action sort of changed the world, right? And, and continues to have uh positive, positive reverberations in the world. And um, Jess, I'm, I'm so excited to have gotten to chance to talk to you today. And um, I think there's a lot here. There's a lot that people are gonna learn from, from you and um, I just think that you're a special gift to the world. And so thanks for, thanks for all of your hard work. Thanks for being a part of, of School Board School and and your work at Coher. It, it ultimately really, really matters to our community. So um, so I hope you're, you feel good about that and uh, just appreciate your time today. Thanks for chatting.
Thank you. That is, that really means a lot to hear. And next time I'll ask you questions so we can learn.
Sounds good. All right, Jess. Take care.
Yeah.